And when we're ready, I'll have almost an hour to take them back home.
Alright, go ahead Richard, our mic number one.
Test, 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 test.
I'll have the mic number so.
Mic three, test, test. Mic four, test, test, mic four. Mic five, test, mic five. Mic six, test, mic six. Mic eight, mic eight. Mic eleven, mic eleven. Mic twelve, this is mic twelve. Mic twelve, testing one, two, three, mic twelve. Test, test, test. Podium, 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 testing one, two, three.
Clerks, mic one, two, one, two. Wireless mic number one, wireless mic number one.
Wireless mic number two, wireless number two.
That's one, that's one, that's one.
Okay. No, 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 that's, that's, to me trying to get this mic working. So don't worry. Okay.
Church, 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 church. Church, church, church.
Yeah, that's what it is. I'm muted, Rich. I'm gonna try to eliminate one more thing. What we get here. Oh damn, that's what it is. By this. No, because if your microphones come like this, then you need this to convert it to this.
Ah.
So.
Got to be the problem. Well, could this work? When I move their old chisel? This microphone, yeah. Alright.
You got it unmuted, Rich?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause you got microphones unmuted. As long as you got microphones unmuted, it picks up everything. I love this part of it. Because when we're here doing our testing, and then Alex asked, did we do a test? We got it on video.
I'm not sure if I'm on here. That's not where you're coming from.
Thank you.
The, the.
We got a lot of support. We could share.
That's a good name.
We don't think you want to read them, right?
Because they were called them.
You could share them. Did you think of calling? Let's take a pause and debate.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, I'm here on the phone. I couldn't get in on Zoom, so I'm on the phone, so I'm in.
Okay, good. I hope we're all in the right place, right? This is how we sign in first and then we go over to closed session.
Yeah, that is correct.
Good.
Wendy said she didn't let in.
Okay, let me ask, let me talk to Ira Sama.
Okay.
I'm messaging Chair Askew for some reason. We, I don't see her in the attendees list.
He might be looking at the closed session.
Asking her if she's joining the open session or the closed session.
Charles, you guys are on a practice session, so I'm trying to get in on my laptop and it's not, it hasn't started because you haven't gone live yet, so. I jumped on my phone to, you know, I'm waiting for you guys to start the meeting.
Okay.
Let me check with IT one second.
Yeah, it does say practice session.
You have to go live for everybody to be able to join in and then you could see who's on there. Otherwise, we just got a screen thing.
Right. Sammy, do you understand that?
Yes, we know, we know how to start the webinar.
I just got a message saying the webinar started. Yes, I think the light just came on.
Yeah, and it's being recorded, even though I don't think the meeting has been called to order.
Well, as Vice Chair, I'm happy to call the meeting to order in the absence of our Chair if we want to just go ahead and do this and then go into closed session.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Susan Blitch also. Give it one more minute Supervisor Adams.
So we're all here, we're all here in the chambers.
Who do you have with you, Charles?
Just Susan, Wendy, Wendy Askew, Chair Askew was trying, she has her hand raised, so she must be on the Zoom somewhere.
Good.
Who's on first?
Just got promoted to panelist.
Here she is.
Hi, I think the link that was sent in our calendar invite maybe wasn't correct. I'd been in the waiting room for some time. And I believe that Supervisor Lejo may also have the wrong link.
I don't know.
I'm on now.
Are you there?
Yes, I'm on now. We were, we couldn't join the meeting nor the public because they hadn't started the meeting live. We were, they were in a practice session.
Yes, okay, very good. So do we have everybody?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So it is 2:33 on Friday, July 30th, 2021, and we're going to call to order a special meeting of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. Could we get a roll call by the clerk, please?
Hello, good afternoon. Let the record reflect that Supervisors Lejo Lopez, Askew, Phillips, and Adams are all present, participating via Zoom.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Are there any additions or corrections to our closed session agenda this afternoon?
There are no additions or corrections, Chair.
All right, we do have a closed session item number 1A and 1B today. Is there any public comment on our closed session items today? If someone in the audience, would you like to go first?
Hi, Wes White, co-president of Salinas Monterey County Homeless Union, on behalf of the unaffiliated Marina Safe Parking Program people, which probably directly affects this one. You know, there's a lot of people that do want services. They've been, you know, I guess approached as far as, you know, what services are available through the county, but you know, they're woefully inadequate and it's tantamount to either, you know, take a downgrade, a major downgrade in your, in what you're doing because they have it at home already. You know, it's an RV or even a car, but it's that space, it's that identity that already is. And so they can't, they can't just downgrade into like, you know, congregate shelter. Now, so they were really having a hard time, I guess, with the word services and what it entails. And, you know, I mean, we have mental health, physical health issues that'll be exacerbated. You know, some of these folks are from seaside, so all these surrounding jurisdictions, they also have laws against RVs being anywhere within their city jurisdictions. And even the county, I believe, has one too, city of Salinas, you know, anywhere along the peninsula, and that's actually where these folks live. They reside, they work. You know, they have doctor appointments. Most folks are on disability. I was able to get a survey going that I submitted. You know, for like, you know, how much do they make? And it's just barely under what's necessary to even get like Section 8 or whatever. And, you know, I mean, these folks need help, not just to be abated, like they're rodents, because they're not, they're people. And we need to be treating people like people is our hardest part, you know, and so, I mean, I submitted a little bit of evidence just overnight, more or less, because I'm just kind of concerned. I'm hoping to preempt any kind of tagging, you know, for the RVs. And I guess I have stirred up a little bit of horniness, so there's quite a few people on Zoom that'll be probably speaking in as well with only two or three phones. So hopefully you'll allow that rotation. But these are the people that are directly affected, you know, they're just hardworking Americans, just like anywhere else. You know, it's just they're down on their luck, but honestly, that luck, there's no getting up from that luck, especially when you keep on destroying what they got and making them live in a worse situation. So I'm not sure if this is exactly what your closed session item is, but it sounded awfully close to that. So, you know, we're here, we're rushing, we're trying to make sure to preempt any kind of tow. And to actually provide, you know, other services because, you know, people could use help, set up spending that money on tow. And tow companies actually have to spend like $3,000 just to even dismantle those things. So that's an expense offset, not even in the county. You know, and it's destroying people's homes more than anything else. I mean, if they got registered, you know, like all the legalities, you know, where could they be 24 hours a day? This is the never-ending question and everything is a no, 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 no. You folks are the most in-charge jurisdiction out of everybody here with state and federal funding. It needs to improve the way we do business. Treat people like people, stop the sweeps.
Do we have a time limit, Adam Chair?
Yeah, thank you. And I thank you for your comment and the timer should be up and running now. Thank you, Sammy, for getting my message on that. Is there any other public comment in the chambers today?
Yes, it does appear to be one more public comment coming up, and I understand Mr. White's comments. I, you know, I just would say that I can't disclose what we're going to be talking about in closed session. But I will let you know that it's not about the safe parking program or parking of RVs or any, you know, anything in relation to that, just so if that will alleviate your need to make comments at this time.
And Charles, could you further elaborate? Would it be appropriate to hear those comments at this time? Or is this not an appropriate time for those comments?
Well, it's, we don't have a general public comment item because this is a, this is a special meeting. People can comment about items that are on the agenda, but as I said, the parking, safe parking program or RV parking or things related to unhoused persons is not the subject of either the open session items or the closed session items.
Okay, so given the way that the wording on the agenda is listed, I, and that people apparently organize for comment, I think it's appropriate for us to hear that. Since we don't identify differently in those conversations on our agenda, so if there's other people in chambers, let's proceed with public comments. And let's stick with our minute 30 for public comment. I'm sorry I didn't announce that earlier. But if there was another person in chambers, we would appreciate your comments today.
Sure. I'm Timothy Heaven, part of the COC Leadership Council in Monterey, San Diego County. And the reason I want to make a public comment today is to bring it to your attention because a decision, as far as I understand, was made yesterday to go ahead and tag these RVs and vehicles up there, and that's why I thought it was imperative that we get in front of you guys as soon as possible before this happens. Because it's happened before, you know, at the Colonel Durham site. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that situation. But basically the overflow from that site, because there was no effective means to relocate these people from there. They just went down to this other site and now they're being able, the same thing's happening there. And it's just insanity to keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. It's like, let's try and give it time and come up with some solutions. That's all we ask, you know, that we try and come up with solutions for these people instead of just, here's a tag on your vehicle. And then they're chasing all around seaside and Salinas and then end up at the same spot. You know, it just doesn't make sense to me. So anyway, that's all I had to say.
Great, thank you for your comment today. Is there, we have a hand raise on Zoom for public comment. And it sounded like there may be a few people, so please watch the clock and Wildfire, we welcome your public comment today for a minute 30. And we've given permission for Wildfire to unmute, but you'll need to unmute manually on your side in order to share your public comment with us.
Okay, am I now on?
We can hear you. Thank you for joining us. We have a minute 30 on the clock for your public comment this afternoon.
Okay, I just wanted to make a statement that for some of us, to offer us a temporary or even just a possibility of temporary housing, it doesn't encourage me personally to give up my home just for a temporary possible solution that's not even guaranteed. Also, I've been a camp host for four years and of course, my contract was up because somebody kind of put me under the bus after I did them a favor. And so things happen to all of us while we come back out here. But, you know, I was doing 20 hours a week for a space, fully hookup, electricity, water and sewer, and volunteered 20 hours a week. I think we should have more programs like that for people like myself. And also a parking area to where we could stay 24 hours and in, that's not a possibility, at least get a a way to be able to park during the day where we don't have to run out our gas.
Thank you for your comments today, Wildfire. Is there any other public comment today on our closed session agenda? Seeing that, I'll close our closed session agenda. And Charles, could you just briefly comment how these particular community members would know if and when this item is placed on a closed session agenda, what wording they should be looking for?
Not exactly. It really depends on what the issue is. You know, if there's something that is on open session about this issue, then it's, then obviously it's something they can comment on if it's a, you know, if there's a, you know, I can't, I can't go into all the potential ways of wording things on closed session, you know, what it might be related to. So I would just, all I can say, tell you is at this point, and I, that this item on the agenda today is not related to the parking or RVs or housing unhoused persons, any of those things. And, you know, I'm happy in the future when somebody comes to make that same comment or Mr. Gerard or Ms. Blitch can, if there's a closed session matter. But I can't go into how you would identify what the subject matter is of a closed session item.
Okay, and I think that they were looking at item number 1A as being the item that they were thinking about. Is there, is there a way that the public could request to have something identified so that they would know when the appropriate time to comment is?
And I'm not sure how to answer that question. I apologize. You know, there are different ways, there are different exceptions to the Brown Act about how you notice things for closed session. And, you know, we, you know, it's closed session for a reason, and even sometimes it's even identifying the subject matter that we are disclosing or discussing in closed session, it in and of itself may not be appropriate. And that's something for council to talk to you about at a future time. Like I said, if somebody wants to ask the question of me whether that is a subject, I might be able to tell them at the time or county council could.
Okay, thank you for that clarifying information. I think it's appreciated for members of the public. There is one other public comment hand raised, Bella Maddox. If we could give Bella opportunity to unmute and share a minute 30 of public comments today, that'd be great. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us today, Bella.
Okay, thank you. I just want to comment that, you know, we all have our little, we have a real close family here now. We all became very, very close. And we feel safe and sure around these people that we're living by right now. We all have doctor's appointments around this area that we don't want to relocate, you know, I have heart problems. I'm on disability. I'm disabled. I have a caregiver and it's hard for me to get around. I can't do much and you guys want to keep moving us from here from one spot back out of the street that you kick us out of. I just don't understand it. We all need services, services that will meet, you know, that will meet us. We're all willing to pay some kind of money if we can find someplace to go, but we don't have to move every 24 hours. It's not cheap for gas, it's not cheap for propane. I mean, we're trying to do the best we can, and that's our home. Why do we want to lose our home where it's something that's temporary and not even a guarantee is going to happen? That's what I have to say.
Thank you for joining us this afternoon, Bella, and thank you for your comments. Wildfire, we already heard from you, so unless there's a second person that's using that phone account, we've already, we only do one, one public comment per person. And so we'll close public comments. We will be recessing into closed session at this point for the closed session items listed. And we expect to reconvene back to open session for a presentation from our Public Health Officer at approximately 2. We had listed 2:45 on the agenda. I think we're probably going to need to push that back until probably 3:00 or 3:15. But we will be reconvening at this Zoom ID account for public session following our closed session discussion. So we'll see you back here in about 15 to 30 minutes. Thank you, and we'll recess to closed session.
Right, welcome back. Do we have everyone moved back over from closed session yet? I see one, two. Do we have Supervisor Phillips? I see Supervisor Adams.
Seems like we're just missing Supervisor Phillips.
Okay, we'll give him one more moment to join us again. This is Friday, July 30th, 2021, and we are reconvening the Monterey County Board of Supervisors from closed session back into open session. For anyone who's watching us on Facebook Live or Facebook or YouTube Live, you're also welcome to join us over on Zoom at webinar ID 224397747. Are there any additions or corrections to the public agenda by our clerk?
No additions and corrections to report.
All right. Do we have Supervisor Phillips with us yet? We do. Can we get a roll call by the clerk, please?
Hi, good afternoon. That the record reflect that all supervisors are present virtually via Zoom.
Thank you. We have a 2:45 scheduled item, item number two, which is to receive a public health update on COVID-19. And I believe we have Dr. Ed Moreno with us today to make a presentation. Dr. Moreno, the microphone is all yours.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Chair. Let's see. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen. Can you see the presentation? Okay, good. All right. So this will be a brief update on COVID-19 from public health. Our case rate is increasing slowly. And we up to 4.4 kids per 100,000 in Monterey County, which was it was just around 1% or less, around 1% at the lowest a couple of months ago in May and beginning of June. And we are seeing, again, cases, most cases are among the unvaccinated individuals here in Monterey County. But it is, it is an increase. The test positivity is also increasing. That was, I think, around 1% as well just a few weeks ago. And that would have been, again, May and beginning of June. But, excuse me, but we're really, again, besides that, we're looking at what are the, what are the, what's the impact of having increased case rates and increased positivity rates? And the impact of that, which is a reflection of the increased transmission of COVID-19, are the hospital admissions. And we know that in the past, when we had an increase in case rates and positivity rates, it was followed shortly by an increase in hospitalization. So we are seeing now receiving reports of more people being hospitalized in the month of July than in the previous two months. And fortunately, testing is still available and testing turnaround time is as short as it's been. And also vaccination coverage is increasing. We were increasing it at a rate of about an additional 1% of the eligible population being vaccinated every week. So we are still making progress here in Monterey County. As far as the case data, which is on our website, we have information about the variants. And this information shows that in California, we're still seeing, we're seeing a rise in Delta variant, which is the B1617.2 and the A1, AY1 and AY2. And here in Monterey County, we continue to see an increase in the Delta variant. But what's, I guess, more important than the actual increase is the proportion. So right now, we are at about seeing that 90% of those specimens that are sequenced among Monterey County cases, I'm sorry, of the sequenced specimens are submitted among Monterey County residents. 90% of those sequenced results are of the Delta variant, and the Delta variant is more infectious. And as I shared before, what we've been, what's been shared with us is that an individual that is infected with the Delta variant will have up to 1,000 times the number of viruses than compared to an individual who is infected with another variant or the original COVID-19 virus. So people are, that explains in part why people who have the Delta variant are much more infectious, because they have so much more virus in the body, much more infectious than people infected with other variants. As far as vaccination, as far as vaccination, we are, I mentioned, we are continuing to see an increase in those that are getting vaccinated in particular. We're seeing a continued rise are among the 12 to 17 age group, which are the last group that was deemed eligible to receive the authorized vaccines. And so we're making probably the biggest jump on a weekly basis among the 12 to 17 year olds. And we continue to see an increase in the 18 to 24, which appear to be being vaccinated at a greater rate than a couple of other age groups among young adults. And then, almost done here, Supervisor, we are still making slow progress, but it, but progress among various race and ethnicities. And again, one that's very concerned about is African-American community. But again, it's about a 1% increase from week to week among that population. And then finally, this is just a map that's available on our website that also shows by region. We're seeing the greatest percentage of greatest proportion of individuals vaccinated are found in the Salinas region, where approximately 79% people living in Salinas area have received at least one vaccine. So making good progress, but we're also, you can see, we've, North County is also making progress. And we're still making some progress in South County. And finally, 72% of people in Peninsula Big Sur area have been vaccinated. So Supervisor, I ask you, that's my update.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moreno. And I, I know that because this was a special meeting and there was a lot of stuff being pulled together at the last minute, that all of these PowerPoints didn't get added to the board agenda. But I just want to verify that the information that you're sharing with us here is all available on the county health department website. Is everything currently updated with what you've just presented?
I'm sure we usually, some of this information is updated on a weekly basis. Much of it is updated on a daily basis, like the case information. But as always, we do send a copy of the presentation to the, for public availability.
Great, thank you very much. And anyone who would like a copy, I'm sure can contact the board's office to get a copy of this or any other presentations that are going to be presented today. I think next up, we have item number B, which is a presentation on current and state federal guidance and mandates for COVID-19. Will that be from?
I'm going to let Charles first take it, and then he can pass it over.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just real briefly, we have a PowerPoint presentation from Ariana Hurtado, who will go through some of the, some of the details about what's out there right now and how we as a county might move forward. But I think most people are aware that because of the COVID-19 increase in cases, especially with the Delta variants, the state government recently announced that they are mandating certain operations in throughout the state, mainly healthcare settings and congregate living settings such as jails, juvenile hall, skilled nursing facilities, that they all, that the workers there all provide proof of vaccination and/or regular testing, whether once a week or twice a week. Similarly, the federal government has announced the same thing for federal employees, I think. And there are some local jurisdictions who are going in that direction also. So we just wanted to kind of set the stage to say that it, you know, there's a lot of response from governments at the local level, the state level, and the federal level to try to address the increasing increases in cases. And one of the things we think is important as we move forward as a county to try to set some examples as far as what are best practices, what we should do at this point, following the advice of our, of our medical professionals, our public health professionals, our scientists. Similarly, what we think it's important to have, to try to have some uniformity across, across the county, whether it's we have special districts, we have hospital districts, we have hospitals, we have cities, and obviously the county. We also have state employees here and federal employees here. So with that said, those, those kinds of guidelines and mandates are coming out from, from the, you know, the state government. And well, I'll turn it over to Ariana to walk through kind of where we are and what are the options for you, you today to give some additional direction on how we might stem the tide of COVID-19. There she is, she's trying to share her screen, so I think we're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Chair, ask you board members.
Few microphone issues here. Bear with us one second.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Chair, ask you board members. I know we're having some microphone issues. Just making sure, can everybody hear us okay? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, make sure that microphone is right in front of your mouth. That's all.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so today we have a presentation to the board to provide you an update on a couple of changes at the state level, which we're looking to get some direction from the board. We will start off first with providing an update on the state public health officer's order that was issued on July 26. Under this order, it's actually scheduled to take effect August 9, and facilities must be in full compliance by August 23. The order does apply to specific acute healthcare and long-term care settings, as well as high-risk congregate settings and other healthcare settings as well. The areas that are primarily impacted within our agency are Nativity, which this order would apply to. It's Nativity Health Department in the areas of the clinics and as well as behavioral health. For the sheriff's office, we'd also, the order would apply to them in, as far as their correction staff and the healthcare contractors. For the probation department, we anticipate this order also impacts the juvenile hall and youth center staff and also other county employees whose assignments may require them to enter covered facilities within the order. The order does require, as Charles mentioned, individuals employed in the above-listed settings to verify their COVID-19 vaccination status or submit to regular COVID testing. The COVID testing does have to have a required minimum frequency of one to two times per week, depending on the work setting. For Nativity, this would mean to employees that are unvaccinated would need to submit to testing two times per week. The health department employees in the specific areas we mentioned would be required to test one time per week. The sheriff's office correction staff also would have the one-time-per-week requirement. And likewise, with the probation department, juvenile hall, and youth center staff would also be required to test one time per week. In the realm of testing, we're currently evaluating how that could be implemented and are finding some significant logistical challenges, as well as some concerns related to fiscal, potential fiscal impacts. And to talk a little bit more about those, we have Health Director Elsa Jimenez and Janine Bouye, Assistant Hospital Administrator on the call today. So I'll hand it over to Elsa first.
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair, ask you, members of the board, members of the public. I just wanted to provide you a little bit of an overview in terms of the anticipated cost to be able to perform the required testing once per week for the employees mentioned on the slide. I want you to know kind of what the assumptions are, is that it could take potentially up to two hours to be able to perform the service if it's not provided on-site. There could be implications depending on the volume of staff needing to have this testing in terms of potentially having to pay overtime or having staff come outside of their normal work hours. There could be potential revenue loss if staff are not available, both of these units, clinic services and behavioral health are revenue generating units, that if they're not seeing patients, they're not able to generate revenue. And then really just the logistics of administering this program. The health officer order does require that the testing be made available, that we have a mechanism to be able to track who's been tested, their results, the ability to be able to kind of begin to assess contact tracing, and of course, communicating with the health department. And then lastly, what I'll add on here is that the test kit used, whether it's a PCR or an antigen, it has to be one of the ones that are approved by FDA under the emergency use authorization. You know, antigen test kits are typically available within our healthcare settings for patients that may come in and present with symptoms, so that the physician has with symptoms so that the physician has an initial quick assessment of what may be happening with that patient so that they can activate and typically it's followed by a PCR. Surveillance testing is authorized, antigen tests are allowed for surveillance testing, but really when they're done more at a frequency of at least two to three times per week, not necessarily once per week. So with those assumptions and assuming it takes an employee about an hour to be able to perform this activity per week, we anticipate that it would cost the county about a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and seventy five dollars per test. This includes the staff time to be able to receive the test. This includes any, this is under the PCR model. This includes the processing time and fees associated with the lab that would be performing this as well as the administrative support to set up the tracking, to collect the specimen or to observe self collection specimen. So that's that's kind of what we come up with without knowing exactly how many of our health department employees in these two bureaus have not been vaccinated. If I were to estimate that maybe forty percent of them have not been vaccinated to date, we are looking at potentially about fifty four thousand dollars per week to be able to complete this function.
So with that, we can hand it over to Janine Bouye to talk about a potential logistical perspectives from the hospital.
Ariana, I'm gonna pass this over to Dr. Harris, he was able to join us, so I'm gonna pass this off to him and let him respond.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I thought he was there, my apology. So from a Nativity Dad perspective, our costs are very similar to Elsa's. We do have approximately thirty nine percent of our employees who are unvaccinated. And our employees would be required to test twice a week versus once as in the health department. And our test, our test, we believe, will run about a hundred and twenty dollars per person. We are able hopefully to reduce that time to get tested from an hour down to hopefully fifteen minutes to thirty minutes. But at that rate, we are looking at a hundred and forty four thousand dollars per week approximately for testing Nativity Dad employees. And that cost has not yet included the contractors and vendors who Nativity Dad is also required to either test or ensure they get tested twice a week.
And I see Dr. Harris is joined, I don't know if he has anything to add. Dr. Harris, are you able to unmute?
I am, sorry, members of the board and chair and the members of the public. I agree with what Janine has said. I think one one difference is because we're centralized, we'll be able to test a bit quicker than perhaps the health department or other areas. So that will come into play, we'll be able to mobilize once we do it pretty quickly.
Thank you. So moving on on the presentation, as we continue to assess some of these logistical challenges and implementing the state's order, we do have one specific area that we would seek direction from the board. And that is related to the county self certification and COVID nineteen vaccination status application. Back in mid-June last month, the the human resources department in collaboration with the information technology department launched this internal app which provided employees on a voluntary basis to provide their current vaccination status to determine whether they were required to wear face covering in the workplace or not. And we've received to date an estimated forty three percent of the response from the workforce. This does exclude Nativity Dad, they have their own tracking system. So we have forty three percent of the county workforce that has provided their response through the application. As of June first, just as a point of reference, we do have approximately twelve percent of the workforce, again excluding Nativity Dad, which continue to work remotely of full time. We anticipate that this twelve percent of the workforce, because they're not coming into the actual work sites, they have not submitted responses via the app. So we would request that the board consider requiring all employees to complete the self certification of their COVID nineteen vaccination status response so that we can get a better picture of the structure of the workforce in terms of vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So that is one particular area that we will seek direction from the board on at the end of the presentation, unless there's any questions at this juncture. Seeing none, we do have three alternatives that we to the implementation of the state's order. The first one requires that the board consider updates to the county's emergency response manual and COVID nineteen prevention program to add a broader provision than what's listed under the provisions in the state order. And this would mandate COVID nineteen vaccinations as well as verifications, meaning employees would have to provide their vaccination status or submit to testing. And testing would be specific to those employees who certify authorized exemptions. These are typically under medical or religious exemptions. This would be for all county employees in the the areas that we previously identified. So Nativity Dad, health department, healthcare clinics and behavioral health, sheriff's office correction staff, probation department, juvenile hall and youth center staff as well as other employees, again, whose assignments require them to enter covered facilities. Under this alternative, there are four, three considerations to take into account. The first one is that this alternative does provide a greater level of protection for both employees in these identified areas as well as members of the public because it does require the county employee to be vaccinated unless, of course, they certify an authorized exemption. This alternative does carry the same requirement that the county provide a COVID nineteen testing to employees in these designated areas. Again, this, the testing would be for specific to the employees who have submitted the authorized exemptions. And we would continue to follow the minimum frequency for the testing as outlined in the state order. So the the other three departments, health department, sheriff's office and probation would continue to have the one time per week testing for these employees and Nativity Dad would continue to have the requirement of two times per week. This alternative also carries an estimated cost for implementation that's expected to be less than the the implementation for the state order as presented, since the vaccination would be required for employees in these areas. So we anticipate that we would have less employees who would need to submit to the weekly testing. Under the second alternative, it's taking an even broader approach to the state's order as presented. This actually would require that that countywide employees, so all employees would be required to have the count, the COVID nineteen vaccination, provide their verification and or submit to testing if certifying again an authorized exemption. Again, under alternative two, this would apply to all county employees. This alternative does provide the greatest level of protection for both employees and members of the public, since again, it would require that all county employees be vaccinated. This alternative also again, carries the same requirement of making the COVID nineteen testing available to all county staff, submitting those authorized exemptions, again, continuing to adhere to the minimum testing frequency as identified in the state's order. The cost for implementing this alternative is expected to be greater than implementing the state order as presented, since the ongoing testing would need to be made available to to employees on a countywide basis rather than those departments that were previously identified. And lastly, under the third alternative, this would be consistent with the requirements that the state of California has implemented for its employees. And it would essentially implement the state's order on a countywide basis. So it would apply to all county employees, meaning they have to provide their vaccination status and verification. And for those employees that are unvaccinated or under vaccinated, they would submit to the weekly COVID nineteen testing. This alternative does provide a greater level of protection because again, employees would although would not be required to be vaccinated, they would be required to submit to regular testing. In terms of logistical challenges, this alternative does present the greatest challenge since it would be coordinating the the ongoing COVID nineteen testing on a countywide basis for all employees. And since the vaccination would not be required, we anticipate we would have a larger number of employees that would need to submit to the weekly testing. The estimated cost associated with implementing this alternative is expected to be the greatest of the three alternatives, since again, the vaccination would not be required. So we anticipate we would need to accommodate a larger number of employees to be tested. And I think this is a good point to pause and answer any questions from the supervisors on any of the three alternatives.
Thank you so much. Um, and let's just make the quick rounds, we'll go by district for any comments or questions, District One.
No, I I appreciate, first of all, the staff's recommendation, but I'm glad that we're as a board considering taking action today on this. I think we take this with all due seriousness, we know this is not an easy decision. But having been one of the counties that was hardest hit by the pandemic to one of the most improved counties, especially among those that are similarly similarly sized to Monterey County, I think it's incumbent upon us seeing the the fast spread of the Delta variant and the increase in infections, not only county in our county, but especially throughout California, that it calls upon us to reflect and perhaps take some more actions to better protect our our residents. So out of these three options, I'm in support of of moving forward with option number two to require all our employees, all our employees to get vaccinated or to or to be tested on a weekly basis. I I think so far San Francisco, San Diego today or a few hours ago, Santa Clara, all already moved to implement this. And then Los Angeles County, the largest, a county with a hundred thousand county employees, will do it in the coming days as well. But I think we would be the first county of our size to move in this direction in California. But outside of the counties, city of Los Angeles already voted to to require that proof of vaccination or get tested along with the city of Long Beach. And even San Jose Unified School District is already moving in this direction. I think there will be more local governments moving to do the same out of a major concern to protect its residents and the public. So I hope that we today could consider supporting option number two. I think it's the right thing to do right now, but it's not only to protect our employees and the public that comes into our county offices, but it's also to hopefully set the example for other businesses and employers to also move and requiring vaccination of their employees. We are setting the example. I know the CSU system did it statewide, and so that would include CSU and B, another large employer is already already having to implement this. We would be the second to do that in Monterey County, but I think as the two largest employers, among the two largest employers, we would set the example for others in our county. And I think that's an important thing to do at this time for all the reasons stated. The the thing I would add to this is that I hope that we would consider on top of a vaccination order is to consider, even though a mask order countywide would be a decision for Dr. Moreno to make, our board can consider an indoor mask order for our employees, our employees and our public facilities for that includes public coming into our county buildings. That would be an additional safety measure that I hope, I think we can get it considered today. But but I think San Mateo County did that already for for all indoor, its indoor facilities and and Los Angeles. And then on last Tuesday, Yolo County, a small rural county, and Sacramento yesterday, all they actually went further, that their their health officers gave orders countywide. We could consider at least for in our facilities to require the mask for our employees and our buildings. So I think that's a, it's not a countywide measure because that would be something Dr. Moreno would order. But we are empowered to also take that additional measure today to also protect, better protect our employees and thank you.
And Supervisor Leal, I would like to also clarify on that alternative because it says and or testing for all county employees. And actually, there's, that would only apply exemptions for those who submitted for an exemption due to a medical reason or for religious. Okay, just to provide clarity.
That language needs to be consistent with other counties that are doing it, although I think Senate, I think it's Santa Clara or San Diego that are still, the the full policy still has to be and the timeline of implementation still have to be fully disclosed. I think that was San Diego actually, so but it's coming, so the thank you for that clarification as well.
Yeah, so just, so option, so option three is similar to what the state is requiring for their employees, which is you can either be vaccinated or tested. Whereas in two, what we're proposing here, and it may not be clear in that first paragraph, is that is that you have to be vaccinated unless you have an authorized exemption.
Thank you. District Two, any comments or questions on these three alternatives?
Now, I I concur with the comments of Supervisor Leal. And you know, we have some private businesses and the universities that are taking the lead that we should have been taking or or should be taking. But we're one of the largest employers and there's a little inequity of doing these mandates for some of our employees, the people that are working in the jail and and the probation department and not the other ones. But I I think it makes sense and I I don't think we have any alternative based on what we have here now. We were talking about maybe implementing that, give it a week or two to implement it, bring it around, but I I concur.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. District Three, any comments or questions?
I guess the only question I have is regarding the testing and what specific type of testing can be used. I just want to make sure that we're very clear with the public about, are we talking PCR, are we talking antigen? And what's available to us in those options?
I can't, good afternoon, this is Elsa Jimenez with the health department. I can start to answer that question and please, my colleagues, feel free to fill in. So the state health officer order provides an option that workers may choose either the antigen or the molecular test, which is the PCR test to satisfy this requirement. But it must be using PCR test or an antigen test that has been approved under the emergency use authorization by the FDA. Now, in terms of supplies, it looks like our entities have less than a thousand combined in terms of some of these rapid PCR tests in house. And again, those are preferentially preferred to be left for use by our patients who may be coming in some in symptomatic who may need a clinical decision making right away. In terms of scarcity, we are not at a point right now where testing kits of either kind are scarce. But as you can imagine, as more entities take action to perhaps mandate testing if people are not vaccinated, that there may be a supply demand situation in the in the near future. I don't know if Christie or Dr. Moreno or Dr. Harris or I would like to add anything to that.
That sounds correct, Elsa.
All right, then, given given that background, I appreciate the input. You know, just, I I guess the questions I have are about rollout of any of these options. And I think that those are going to take time, so I concur with Supervisor Phillips's assessment of needing at least a couple of weeks. I also concur with much of Supervisor Leal's argument about the reasoning behind our need to lead. And I do think that it's appropriate to implement this. I think that clear question that was laid out by Irma about I think that clear question that was laid out by Irma about option one and two is something I'm looking forward to continuing to discuss here and hear from my colleagues in terms of opinions on the the language, I guess, for the the requirement. And so I think that's the piece that I'd love to learn a little more about the differences between options one.
Let me make this clear. Supervisor Lopez, could you be more clear with this with the question? And then let's get that information for you for us right now. Because it sounded like we've got something pending up for option two, but you have a question to clarify. Let's get that clarification.
So the clear clarification needed is the difference between options one and two specifically is it applies to the quote unquote mandate versus, you know, the allowance for certain folks to opt out, right? So what is that clear division in terms of the requirement?
To answer your question, Supervisor Lopez, under alternative one, the the biggest difference between alternative one and the state order is that the state order does not require the vaccine. It does require that employees provide their vaccination status and submit to the weekly testing if unvaccinated. Under alternative one, we would be requiring the vaccine for limited to those areas that are listed on the screen. And again, the testing would be required of those employees who certify an authorized exemption only. Alternative two is similar to alternative one in that we'd be requiring the vaccination and the weekly testing would be limited to employees who have an authorized exemption. But this would be applied on a countywide basis. So it would apply to all county employees to include potentially those teleworking.
So anyone could request to, it under option two is not mandated as long as somebody is getting tested weekly. Is that correct?
No, it it would be required. The vaccine is required under both alternative one and two.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sorry. So and and just to clarify, and I'm trying to pull up option the slide. If you could go back to option one, it would not be for all employees. It would just be required for certain employees in the county, correct?
Correct. It'd be for Nativity Dad, the Health Department, Clinics, Behavioral Health, Sheriff's Office Corrections, Probation Department, Juvenile Hall, and the Youth Center staff, as well as any other employees in other departments who are required to enter any facility that's covered under the state order.
Okay, and option two would expand that to all county, all five 5,500 county employees?
Correct.
Okay. Is that clear Supervisor Lopez, the difference?
It is. I'm just, you know, I I'm thinking about that backside, the logistics. How attainable is it? And I guess that's, we're not meeting for about a month after this, so. I I've got, I'm I'm just wondering, you know, we're going to give direction and is it is it something that can be implemented, given the lack of knowing what's going to happen around other partners around the state and then access to testing materials that might be needed, given this ramp up in testing? But yeah, so my my question has been answered. Thank you.
And if I may.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If I may, Chair. So if the board does take action on alternative number two, we will or either one or two, we will need a timeframe to be able to roll this out and to say that it's effective. And I think a reasonable expectation would be that we would have to, if you can give us at least 10 weeks. We've looked at other jurisdictions and some of them are giving at least 10 10 weeks for an employee to get vaccinated. And it includes that that those 21 days to get that second vaccine.
Other counties. 10 weeks? Other counties gave 30 days. I haven't seen any news articles that that gave that much time.
I want to say it was the city and county of San Francisco.
Yeah, so we, the actual. Right. Let's let's take it back one step. So Supervisor Lopez, did you have a preference then for the alternatives, given the additional information?
I I don't have a preference at this point. I have a lot of concerns about logistics, but in terms of preference, no, I think I think both are good options. It's just a question of logistically what's possible and the timeframe.
Okay, all right, let's.
I share I share his concern about logistics.
Logistics, yeah. Let's give Supervisor Adams a chance to weigh in with any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. You know, it doesn't happen often, but I'm always happy when Supervisor Lejo agrees with me 100% and takes the words right out of my mouth. So I am completely supportive of of alternative two. But I must add that I feel 10 weeks is is much longer than we need to to hold off on this. I think people need to be spurred into action. And my suggestion is that we would look at sometime more like mid-August or certainly by the beginning of September, when people would have the, whereby people would have the opportunity to have completed either getting their test or getting their validated verification on why they cannot, excuse me, getting their vaccine or their validated verification on why they are unable to have the vaccine. I think giving, you know, what is that, six weeks essentially? I think that's plenty of time, much more so than 10 weeks. That just seems way too long to wait. Thank you. So yes, alternative two.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. And I'll just weigh in. I I think the the county does have a duty to serve our most vulnerable residents. And I am pleased that the state has sort of pushed on this point. One of the challenges that I really felt as a local elected official is that I'm not a healthcare expert and that I really would like to know that the best practices in how to respond to this as we continue to learn more information are being made available for us to help guide our decisions. And at this point, we we now know that new information is is coming out. We do have a vaccine that keeps individuals safe. However, it doesn't appear to be providing as much protection to those who remain unvaccinated and with the potential for people who are vaccinated to continue to spread the virus to those who are unvaccinated. And as we as we keep learning about that, I think that we do have a duty to make sure that we're protecting our most vulnerable and for our most vulnerable at Nativity Dad, at the, you know, our county clinics in custody with the Sheriff's Office or the Juvenile Hall. I I absolutely think that we have a responsibility to take every measure to protect and serve those county residents. But taking it one step further, we also have a duty as 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 local, local government to model best practices in public health. And what we're learning and hearing now is that maximizing vaccination rates is a best practice in public health and is one thing that we need to do to keep Monterey County safe, keep our businesses open, when schools open in the fall, to keep our schools open, to control the 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 expansion of of this virus. So I I'm I'm comfortable supporting alternative two. I absolutely am interested in hearing from county, county workforce. And I I wish this presentation could have been presented with the agenda so that people had a chance to review the options and formulate their questions and get some public feedback to us. So anyone who is watching online right now, we will open this up for public comment before we take any final actions. And I am very interested in hearing your thoughts and and feedback. But at this point, I'm I'm comfortable recommending that we move forward with option two on a timeline that's hopefully faster than 10 weeks. And the other piece that I just want to, I'm on record now, the indoor mask order, the county Health Department put out or Health Officer put out a recommendation for that. And I I do feel that it's something that we can very easily model having an indoor mask requirement in county facilities. So I'm also comfortable moving forward with that, with that recommendation that was was listed here. And then the final thing that hasn't been mentioned yet, but there was some information about the vaccination app. And I think that that's something we can immediately ask all of our county employees to respond to so that we have some data points to help us determine execution of these other alternatives that we're discussing. So with this, I think, if it's okay Supervisor Lejo, I see your hand raised, but.
It just on, what's my point? It it just on the point that Irma brought up earlier, which is city and county of San Francisco. I'm looking, I'm reading the New York Times and they point out because they implemented their vaccination policy I think among the first in the nation at the on June 24th. But they said, once their policy went into effect, they only they the article reads, city employees will be required to show proof of their vaccination status within 30 days. So if we have implement our policy, say, effective August 15th, from that day forward, the employees would have 30 days to provide their proof of vaccination. So essentially, if we make a decision today, that's giving six weeks, about two weeks to implement the policy. But then employees have the 30 days to show the proof of of vaccination. And those who are vaccinated, as we all know, the state set up a really nice system, very quick. It takes two or three minutes where you put in some minimal data and you could get your electronic proof of vaccination on the statewide system. So among those who might may have lost their card, it will be very easy to just obtain a copy and keep on their phone and to provide it to the county in a very expedited, expedited in an easy fashion. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So we'll do some staff comments, and I would like to take it out to public comment. And for anyone who's watching us online who would like to weigh in on this, please be prepared to raise your hand so that we know how many people we have and that we can call on you. And if you are on the phone, I think it's star nine allows you to raise your hand. So please be prepared for public comment coming up next. Right?
Okay, thank you. And I would like to also state, and so thank you again Supervisor Lejo. One thing that I forgot to mention was the fact that we will have to meet with our labor groups. This is a meet and discuss item. And so our Labor Manager, Ariana Ortalo, will be scheduling those meetings promptly with our labor groups.
Great, thank you. All right, let's take this out to public comment for for anyone listening in the audience who would like to share thoughts about what's been presented, what's being discussed, the alternatives one, two, or three, the indoor mask mandate for county buildings and or requiring the response to the vaccination app. Is there anyone in chambers today who would like to comment?
There, there's no one in chambers. I I will just point out, Madam Chair, is that we did have also a recommendation or sorry, slides on the potential for a mask requirement, face covering requirement. And so I think you opened that that question up to everybody. I just want to make sure that that the board also had the chance to look at what we were potentially requiring, which is basically what you said, face covering for all employees and or face covering for all persons who enter county facilities.
Yep. So I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand for public comment. I know this is a special meeting and people weren't necessarily prepared to join us on a Friday afternoon. So I'm going to bring it back to the board for any additional conversation. And what I'm hearing, I think at this point, is that there's a support for alternative two with a six-week timeline. I heard Supervisor Lejo, Phillips, Adams, and myself weigh in with that as our preference. I heard on the indoor mask requirement for county buildings, I heard Lejo and myself weigh in with support for that. And I haven't yet heard anyone else weigh in in regards to the vaccination app issue. So let's take it through districts again for some additional questions and direction, see if we can build consensus Supervisor Lejo.
No, Madam, I would just, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make that the the motion on on both the vaccination requirements, as you read, and also on the mask order. I I just like to make the motion that we move forward on that today.
I would like to second that motion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could ask the motion maker and second to include the requirement of all county employees to complete the self-certification vaccination status, either electronically or in paper form.
Could you, could you clarify what the self-certification means? That's proof of proof of vaccination? Because self-certification meant something else previously where people were just testing on their own without proof that they were vaccinated. So.
Actually, very, very good clarification. I apologize there. And I guess we shouldn't have self. We should just say that we should requiring all employees to provide proof of vaccination status either on the either on the county app app that's out there on the on the the self-screening app on MC Connect or provide a a paper certification of vaccination status. So apologize for that language here. I guess it's not, we shouldn't have self-certification. It would be certification of vaccination status. And like you said, they can either provide the copy that they already have from their vaccine provider or get it from the state, and it's very easy to do.
Right. Yes, I will include that in the motion. Thank you.
Now, I'll accept that as the second as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second for three to include proceeding with alternative two. And could we put alternative two back up on the screen again, just to make sure everyone can see that? Thank you. So alternative two, which would require all county employees to show proof of vaccination or show an authorized exemption, which would then require regular testing that the county would need to be prepared to provide. The second piece of that is an indoor mask requirement for all county buildings. And the third piece of that motion is to require proof of vaccination, employees to submit their proof of vaccination. Did we get that right Supervisor Lejo? Supervisor Lejo, you have your hand raised.
Yes, the only additional thing that I would clarification that I would have us add is whether we want to include an exact date of when this policy would go into effect. We said mid-August, but do we could set a definite date of of Monday, August 16th or Monday, August 23rd? That way we give that direction specifically.
Do you want to put a date out Supervisor?
I would put August 16th and giving the 30 days, once that of that implementation date for employees to show the proof of vaccination.
And does that give enough time, Irma, for a meet and confer conversations to occur?
Yes, we believe so. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? And I'm gonna specifically call on Supervisor Lopez to see if you had any additional comments or questions that you wanted to make sure we were clear about.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, we've already done public comment, so I believe we can take a real call vote on this.
Supervisor Lejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
I I do want to say I I share some of the concerns about logistics that Supervisor Lopez, but I it is what it is. So I'm I'm a yes.
Supervisor Lopez?
Yes, with the same caveats. Thank you.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew?
I'm I'm an a vote on this. And I do, I just, I want to, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate, you know, the concerns about trying to get everything organized quickly enough. And I will trust that our county team will report back to the board about any source of additional funding that's going to be necessary to to execute on this and that we have the staff in place. And I also just want to make a brief comment. I I generally am one that very strongly believes in personal choice around what happens with your body as a parent, as an individual, as a woman. And so I don't take this decision today for a vaccination mandate lightly. And I also feel that we have an overriding responsibility to ensure the health of those around us and the safety of those around us. And in this case, the overriding consideration of the community's health and safety, of our children's health and safety, of keeping schools open, moving into the fall, is a is an overriding consideration that that for me was was considerable in this decision. So my my vote is an a. And with that, our motion carries. Was there anything else on our, let's see here, I'm going to pull back up my agenda. It looks like we also, so we've addressed item C, which is the updates to the Emergency Response Manual to add provisions regarding vaccinations, verifications and our testing. Item D, which was to consider updates to the Emergency Response Manual regarding face covering requirements for employees and non-employees entering county facilities. We've also addressed option E, which was to consider updates to the Emergency Response Manual requiring employees to complete the self-certification of COVID-19 vaccination status. And item F is any other related direction. And I'll just circle once back again around through my colleagues to see if there's any other related direction that you'd like to discuss today Supervisor Lejo.
Where's my hand, ma'am? Thank you.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I'm I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you. Supervisor Adams?
I'm fine, and I just wish everyone a happy recess.
Thank you. And there is one, there is one final item that I would like to ask staff to to report back to us with. And we do have COVID testing available out in the community. And I know that we we've begun to do some research about how we as a county will provide COVID testing to those who qualify for one of the authorized exemptions. I would like to find out what options are available to make COVID testing available to all county employees, regardless of their vaccination status on a more regular and easily accessible in in more easily accessible and regular ways, recognizing that we do have many employees with children. have many employees with children who are, who have been to come to work and continue providing services. They will be wearing masks, but I know that there's a comfort level of having access to regular vaccinations as we have schools reopening. So that's just a request that I would make to staff to bring back with some options for the board to consider at a future date. Ariana Hurtado?
Actually, she raised her hand for me.
For you, Ramah, yes.
As their director. So we have one last item, that's item number four here on your slide, authorizing Nativity Dad interim CEO and Charles McKee, our CAO, to adopt any COVID policies or procedures consistent and implement those by what other healthcare entities in the, in the county have done. So would you consider that? And I know that Chad Harris, our interim CEO, is here with us and can talk to you a little bit about the potential need for that.
Great, thank you for joining us today, Dr. Harris.
Thank you Chair Askew and members of the board and members of the public. I would just add, I think it's, it's critically important for there to be a standard health approach to this in the county. And I know you all will be out on recess and obviously this is a quickly moving item as far as how it evolves, both nationally and state and locally, and want to make sure that we're consistent with the health standard across the, across the county. So if anything evolves over the next three weeks, that we have that ability to implement policies and procedures as need be.
Great, thank you. Let's go backwards down our number line for discussion about this item, and it sounds like we're, you're asking for a motion from the board.
That is correct.
Great, Supervisor Adams, comments, questions, directions?
I have no questions, and I would be happy to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Dr. Harris.
Great.
Lopez, a second.
Okay Supervisor Lopez, that's a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Oh, I didn't have any questions on the last one either. I got skipped over there, but we're good. I'm good on this one.
About that.
I'm, my apologies. Supervisor Phillips?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I just feel sorry for my poor colleague down in South County got, got run over there.
I've got my notes here, I'm even checking off districts as we go, so thanks for saying something. I just gotta speak up sometimes. Supervisor Lejo?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to do public comment on this separate? Or did our, our call for public comment cover us?
I, I think it's.
So it's a yes, we should. Okay, is there any public comment on this motion that would authorize a Nativity Dad interim CEO and our county CAO or designated to adopt COVID-19 policies and procedures consistent with those implemented by other healthcare entities in the county? And this would be for a duration of while the board is on break or beyond? Is there a timeline associated with this?
No.
Okay. Any public comment on this motion? Seeing no hands raised, is there anyone in chambers?
There's no one in chambers.
No one in chambers, all right. So we'll close public comment and bring this back for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Lejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips? Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips? Chair Supervisor Askew?
Aye, aye.
And Chair Supervisor asking.
Aye, great, thank you. So this, motion carries.
Madam Chair, could I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On the, the face covering mask requirement, I don't know if that, if that was intended to go in effect immediately or August 16th?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we had the motion amended to be effective August 16th with 30 days for, for implementation. Did I, Supervisor Lejo, you had put the date forward, did I get that right?
I think that discussion was on the vaccinations, but we didn't give a specific date separately on the mask order. Because, because other counties such as Yolo, on Tuesday, they made their mask order go into effect more rapidly. They put theirs went into effect, I think, two days later. So I think that's a valid, valid question. Certainly with vaccination approved, that, that's, takes a little bit more time to get those things in order, but just to implement a mask policy, I think we could do that much more rapidly. So I'm looking to this, to the CAO, maybe if you would want to suggest a date that's reasonable in the coming week or so?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to, I think most people are aware of the, of the issue. I think it's reasonable to, you know, I think August 9th would be most reasonable. I think you could even do it earlier than that, but I think August 9th, which is just over a week away.
Actually, if I can add to this point, this is a meet and discuss topic, so we would need to discuss potential impacts to employees with our labor groups on the mask requirement. So maybe a two-week timeframe might be sufficient.
So then we would stick to the August 16th date, that's two weeks.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, could we give authority to the CAO to implement that when appropriate? As soon as appropriate?
Fabulous. Do we need to vote on that? Do we need to formally take that, that action, or is that clear?
I think so.
Yes.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Wonderful. So we have a motion from Lopez, a second from Lejo, to delegate authority to the CAO to proceed with the mask mandate for indoor county buildings on a timeline as deemed appropriate by the CAO. Is there any public comment on this action? Seeing no hands raised? Is anyone in chambers?
No one in chambers.
Great, all right, let's take a roll call vote, thank you.
Supervisor Lejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew?
Aye. All right, any final direction? Go ahead and raise your hand or jump in. I'm just going to invite my colleagues to speak up if you have any final direction that you'd like to have discussed today. All right, with that, I assume, Charles, it will be, someone will come back with an update on the implications of the direction we've given today.
Yeah, so you're talking about cost implications, is that what you mean?
Yep, to implement the option two that we gave direction on?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chair, before we adjourn, I would just say there's no reportable action from closed session.
All right, and our next meeting, do we have the date of the next meeting? I don't have my calendar up, but could we just make that, we'll be on recess for two weeks. The board's next public meeting will be on August?
August 24th.
August 24th, that's Tuesday, August 24th will be the next meeting of this Board of Supervisors. There will be a board retreat that I believe is being scheduled for August 17th, simply to discuss some just best practices and local, local government leadership. So look forward to seeing my colleagues on the 17th and seeing everyone else back here again on the 24th. Thank you for joining us on a Friday afternoon. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors.
Special thanks to the good job done by our stand-in clerk today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everyone, see you soon.